This program is brought to you as a public service by Maui Causes. Maui Causes is a crowdfunded media production group that provides media production services to a variety of environmental and progressive causes here in Maui County. Visit us on the web at www MauiCauses.org.
Welcome to another edition of Maui Causes and the Citizens Initiative. It's a co-production between myself, Sam Small, and Todd Swan, who's out there in the control room pushing buttons and pulling strings to bring you information that you're not likely to get in other places in Maui County. You know, the Maui News is a very corporate-driven publication, and so they limit the discussion. You know, occasionally you'll see things in the letters to editors, but that's the only place, you know, in that publication, and what other publications are there? You know, even the Maui Time Weekly, which people have some perception of it being an independent, you know, weekly newspaper, they don't do really very much. Occasionally, there's an article that tests the boundaries of the existing corporate structure here in these islands, but they don't offend anybody. And unless you are offending someone as a journalist, you're not doing your job. That is the job. You know, here in Hawaii, the level of corruption, we consistently rise to the top of the national polls for corruption on a state level, and it's a really small state. So who are these corrupt people? Well, they are the people that you see in the room. They are the people who are currently in office. There's a lot of corrupt people running our governments. Our mayor lied to us openly two years ago about GM seeds and papaya police. All of that was a total fabrication. Why? Because, you know, he'll get some benefit down the line if not directly today, well, you know, when they're not looking a couple years after the office. You watch to see what prime piece of land that family gets after he leaves office, that they'll get for a song and be able to run some kind of agricultural program and be set for the rest of their lives. That's how it's done here. We have an extraordinary level of concentrated power unlike any state in the United States by virtue of the plantation system that overtook these islands, further consolidated by the military in World War II, and after World War II just turned over to the corporations that were in place. A&amp;B used to be a Hawaiian company. It's not anymore. It's not. It's run by people from other countries that don't live here that are generating profits for their shareholders, which by law they have to do. They have to put the needs, the financial benefit of their shareholders before any other purpose. So they're not interested in what's going on on the ground here in Maui, in Maui County, all of it. You know, Lanai suffers the same thing. I mean, there's this bizarre environment where an individual owns such a huge portion of what's there, and everything that goes on is a result of that person's desires, their whims. That's the... And nobody... Everybody's just like, "Well, that's just the way it is." Well, it's extraordinary, and we have to speak up as a people. We have an opportunity for the first time ever, really, to take back control of the government of this county. Two years ago, the GM moratorium lit a fire, and it has brought candidates to the game. People have risen to the opportunity because the community showed that they would come out and vote and make a difference. And you did two years ago. We won the GM moratorium vote. Our corrupt county refuses to honor your vote. That's a measure of how much you need to come out and vote again. Not very many people came out in the primary. We're hoping that people come out for the general election November 8th. It's truly important. Your children's well-being on these islands is at stake here because if you follow what's been going on and the people that are in power and have been in power for the last, oh, some of them, it's like, you know, 15, 18 years, there's a lot of bad development going on on this island that is harmful long-term to your and your children's well-being. A lot of decisions that are being made, they are making those decisions, and that leadership needs to change. The only way that it's going to change is if you come out and vote. We have candidates this time that can make a difference. If we can get five and hopefully even seven of the Aloha Aina candidates into the county council, then they will be able even to override a mayoral veto. They will even be able to deny Alan Arakawa his personal whims, his friends running departments, having jobs as a director with absolutely no experience. His personal practice of doing that is one of the most harmful things that has happened in this county. We have people that are completely unqualified running departments. They're supposed to be... A director of a department is supposed to be the most knowledgeable person in the room, and yet Alan hires his friends who have no experience. Do you think that doesn't demoralize the people who work in those departments? That they have no... They have a sense that there is no career path for them because the mayor would never give them the job. He's too busy giving it to their friends. These are people that are working professionally in these fields, and they see no future working for Maui County. That doesn't serve you. That doesn't serve the public. That's the kind of change that needs to happen, and your current county council members, very few of them, supported the opportunity to change the structure of the government here in this county. Why? Why didn't they support that kind of change when it's quite obvious that we need it? Because they have their own agendas. They're all attached, all but, in my opinion, all but two of them are attached to corporate initiatives that are fighting each other. Part of why nothing good ever happens is that you have corrupt individuals, and they're using and manipulating the system as aggressively as they can to each try and get their own way, and they're fighting each other. They're fighting over the pie. It's your pie, and you're not at the table. Your needs are not being represented, but that can change. And part of that change is bringing in candidates that are new to our process here in Maui County, who've been paying attention and care and seeing that people did come out to vote two years ago. They're seeing the opportunity now, this election, to actually bring change to the county, and your vote makes that happen. We've had several of the candidates on our show, and we've got one of them here in the studio today. We're blessed to be visited by Gabe Johnson, who is running for your county council out of Lanai. Thank you for tolerating my tirade.
Thanks for having me, Sam.
It's my pleasure. You know, so what's your take on the structure? Let's, you know, let's bring it down to, let's talk about the structure of our county government. How does that... Where does that sit with you?
Well, I mean, you said a lot, and I agree with a lot of what you said. There is some systemic changes that we must do in order to really make it a truly democratic society. We, right now, our politicians are not listening to us, the people. They instead are listening to the corporate interests, and that is, unfortunately, that's the sign of the times, the way it is. The mainland has that issue.
Mainland has the same problem.
And we've got the issues here.
Right.
It's just, it's stacked on us, though. It's not just this one issue. It's all stacked against us, you know, the fact that we live in an island state where everything's twice as much to get here, and then the things that cost us, the corporations are putting the burden on us, the taxpayers, to pay for all of it.
Right.
So our middle class has been shrinking, and shrinking, and shrinking, and shrinking. And so now you see people taking two jobs, three jobs, and we're all just trying to get these little crumbs from the cookies that are being given to the corporate interests.
But they're kids, people's kids, just starting out in the job process. They, there's nothing for them here. They're leaving the island.
You know, I'm glad you mentioned about the kids because I'm a single dad. I have a 13-year-old daughter, and that's a real issue when it comes to our communities. I just was at the Filipino Association meeting, and it's very specific of an issue that Lanai has as well is, it's the typical brain drain. When you have a young person, 18 or 19 years old, and he knows or she knows that there's no way they're going to buy a house over here.
Right.
Unless they do two, three jobs, they find a husband or wife real fast, and they get two or three jobs, and maybe you can get a loan, and maybe you can get a home. What a lot of the younger people are doing, you know what? That's not what I want in my life, and they move, they move away to Vegas. I mean, how many of us have no friends and family there in Vegas?
There's a huge Hawaiian community in Vegas.
So many Hawaiians live in Vegas now, or, you know, Nevada area. And it's like, that's, that, what happens is, is there goes your tax base because young people, you know, make money, and we take their taxes, and there goes our tax base. And not just that, is the, the parents get older and older, and they're going to need someone to help take care of them.
Right.
And then the burden becomes on the county again.
Right.
So we don't have the tax...
And we have absolutely no resources for the elderly here.
Right, so now we're...
Exactly. That doesn't even exist. There's not even a hint of, of, of support for elderly people here on the island.
Right. And so how many times have you met someone who has a good career here, and you say, "Oh, so how did you get to this career?" Most of them left, left and went to the mainland, and then finally homesick or got to where they wanted their career and then come back.
Or their parents, or their parents needed them.
Yeah.
And they came home to take care of their elders.
That's a very common thing, exactly.
Fortunately, it's a, it's a strong part of the culture.
Right.
That people do respect and take care of their elders.
Yeah.
So they, they do come back.
So that is what a lot of communities suffer with. They call it the brain drain, and that really is, when the cost of living goes up, young people will leave.
Yeah.
Why would you stay? You're young, go see the world, right?
Right.
So that, that affects our town immensely, you know? So I think it helps, it affects our government services on our, on our kapunas. And that's one thing I fought for, for a lot, a lot, a long part of my life was fighting for the rights of our, you know, Americans with Disabilities. You know, I was a county commissioner on Americans with Disabilities Act, and I, I did a lot of things that would help the seniors on Lanai and the kapunas on Lanai, but then as I looked down in the broader picture, it's pathetic. We don't, we don't hire people with disabilities in this county. We're the lowest in the nation on hiring people with disabilities. And, and I was just at this meeting with some people, you know, the Wheelers, they call them the Wheelers, the Maui County group of people who just, you know, they're in wheelchairs, and they, you know, they take on some power themselves and say, "You know what? We're, we're going to go out and see the, the island," and good for them. They empower themselves. And I was just talking to one, one lady, and, you know, she lost her job, you know? It's hard, it's hard to make ends meet. My other friend who lived on Lanai for many years, he couldn't get the services that he needed. He had to move away because, you know, he's in a wheelchair, and it's not easy. So that's, that's an issue that we, we, it's, we really got to think about, like, are we, are we fair and equitable to every group of people on this island, you know? And I think we're, we have been failing miserably at that.
We have been, and it's, it's frustrating because it is part of a larger, you know, lack of social services all the way around. And unfortunately, Hawaii is stuck with this notion, with the legal ruling, that we can't change the eligibility requirements. A lot of states have a timeframe that you need to be able to prove that you are a citizen for a period of time before you're eligible for social benefits. Hawaii had historically an open door, and so you could arrive on the islands and immediately apply for social services. That is an open door for people to exploit it. If somebody's got a problem, they just come.
Yeah.
And they get support for their problem. They're not really part of the community. But the Supreme Court ruled that all of the states, they froze them and said, "Okay, as of whatever your level of restrictions are today, that's it. You cannot make it more restrictive."
Yeah.
And Hawaii is stuck. We're stuck, you know, because it had an Aloha open door, and now we can't close that door.
Yeah.
And the world has evolved to a place that no one, you know, anticipated that there would be that much of a social need for that kind of social umbrella, and we just can't fund it here.
Right.
And people with disabilities fall into that trap.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I guess that's, I hear what you're saying, but my passion has always been trying to give those people the services that they need.
Yeah.
You know, whether they got here, it doesn't matter. They're here. You know, they're part of our communities, and we need to help them. Let's say you're just a guy, a regular guy, born and raised here, and you got injured, and now you're considered disabled. We got to help him. He's a member of the community, you know?
Right. Well, and that's, you know, I mean, again, the, the lack of that level of social services is a measure of how strong the corporate control is. Because if you drive around the, if you drive around Maui.
Yeah.
There's no place to pull over by the side of the road. There is no piece of land that the plantations have not very visually, very publicly claimed as their own. It's a form of oppression in and of itself that they control everything, and if they're not forced to give money into social services, they're not going to do it.
Right.
And that's why we, that's why the parking spaces are so small, and that's why someone with a disability has no support.
Exactly. And I think we got to change that.
Yeah.
Those days are over. You know, I, I think we have to really look at that and say, there's a, I'm going to probably butcher the quote, but societies are judged on how they treat the less fortunate of themselves.
Sure.
So if we're going to sit around and be all high maca maca and say we're the best and we're the voted number-one island and, you know, whatever.
On whose back?
Yeah. Who, okay, think about that, and think about how many people we have homeless. If you think about how many people we're not helping who are disabled, think about how many people who are indigenous people that are just set, put on the sidelines. That's not right, and that's, and we should judge ourselves on that. We should say, "Look, if we can't help the, you know, disenfranchised, then how can we be claiming to be the number-one island in some Conde Nast magazine or something like that? That's humbug to me."
Well, that's, that's the, you know, the tourist industry's fabrication of a Hawaiian experience.
Yeah.
It's not actually Hawaiian. They've crafted a Hawaiian experience, and that's what they're selling to the general public, and it's worth billions.
Yeah.
And they give as little as possible back to the host culture and the environment. Add to your list of entitlements of, of resources, human or otherwise, that is consistently exploited here in Hawaii. It's the environment.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's just astounding.
One of the points on my platform is protecting the resources that we have, and the three ones that are real important to me is, you know, the human resources, the natural resources, and the cultural resources. And those all fall under that. Like, we have to really, you know, take care of those things because we're an island state. If you, if they're gone, then they're gone.
Right.
You know, you can't just move down the road and, you know, start, start a new shop. It doesn't work like that.
That's why I've always been amazed at how little, how silent the tourist industry is about the presence of chemical-based agriculture here in Maui County. Because the chemical companies in their open-field chemical experiments are putting the total environment at risk, and they're putting the panache, they're putting the brand of Maui at risk. Because as, as the public more and more comes to associate Maui with GMOs and rampant pesticide drift, pesticide abuse, that's going to hurt the tourist industry.
If you destroyed a very thing that the people are coming to see here, why would they come?
Why would they come?
You know? So I agree with you 100%. It's just, I think it's, going on what your point was, the corporations who are poisoning our island and the tourism industry, the tourism industry doesn't see the connection. You know, they just see, "Oh, our numbers are up in October, our numbers are down in October." They don't think of like, "Why are they really coming here?" You know? So they're just thinking of the bottom line for that, you know, business month.
For that niche.
For that, you know, time that they're worried about their own monies.
Right.
But if they, if they take a step back and look at the big picture, they'll realize that the people aren't going to spend that kind of money to come to an island that doesn't have fish in the sea, that everything's an invasive species, koki frogs outside your, your windows singing all night long. Why would they come? They would just stay in California. And, you know, the Japanese and the Californians are two big groups of people that come here. They don't have to fly that long flight to come out here and see things that we, we lost through our own ineffectiveness, you know?
Now, Lanai is deeply affected by the tourist industry. I mean, that's, that's the only real business that's going on over there.
Yep. It's our economic engine.
Yeah. Is there, you know, movement in that? Are you able to sort of see a direction of where that's going there and how, what the community is faced with because of that?
See, I can only speak from my personal experience, and when I was in the tourism industry, I got laid off three different times. Three different times when the economy in 2008 crashed, and it was always economy-based, you know? Oh, the tourism trade is down, so...
Right.
And, and that's the cold reality of business for just profits. It's the human resource gets the first thing on the cutting, on the cutting floor is you just lay everyone off. And I, and this is, my experience with the ownership under Mr. Murdoch was, he was, he was really upset that we didn't make money for him on the island, so he laid a lot of people off. And then this time, we have Larry Ellison as the owner, right? The fifth richest man in the world, I think, and things he's done for the community are a lot different than Murdoch, where he's definitely, you know, put some money into the island, which is important because you have to.
You have to. It's, it's infrastructure.
Yeah. You have to put the money in the island.
There's a physical reality to it.
Exactly. It's, and so I think, but for me, it's my own personal experience on this, is I've, I was, when he, when he bought the island, I was like, "Okay, so let's start over and let's see what he can do for us and see, you know, what we can do for him." And then I started thinking to myself, "Wait a second. The whole system here is really undemocratic." And that kind of made me take a step back and said, "You know, I have to worry, I'm a single dad, I have to worry about my bills, and here I am worried about this billionaire's bills." You know, it's kind of ironic, and, and he's like the, you know, extremely rich billionaire, not just your normal billionaire. So that kind of stress add, you know, added to my day-in, day-out life, and it's just, it's really kind of, I don't think it's the way we want to move forward. We have, you know, we have to make Lanai more democratic. We have to have, people just want to have a say, you know? They want to say the way, they want to have a say in which way the direction the island is going. Are we going to go through organic crops and, you know, are we going to start organic fields? Or are we going to push more towards tourism, towards the higher-end tourism? You know? So there's, there's definitely paths that we can go. It's just, as Lanaians, we don't have a say in it, and it's so frustrating, you know? So I'm, I'm, that's why I'm running. That's a big part of why I'm running, because I want to feel like I have a say in where we're headed.
Right. Now, the differentiation, this distinction that you made of high-end tourism, can you, can you talk about that a little bit?
Certainly. There's a bit of a movement on Lanai where we don't want to turn it into Waikiki, you know?
Right.
Where it's just the big, massive amount of people.
Rampant, yeah.
What we want to do is kind of have it, or what I would say, what the company's trying to do is, they'll get more higher-end tourism who will spend more money, and we won't have a massive amount of people shkowing. So we'll just have a few rich billionaires and millionaires, one percenters coming.
Right.
And they won't affect the island as much as if, if it was just John Q. Public from the Midwest.
Right. Well, Maui did that as, as a policy itself many years ago.
Yep.
Elmer Crivilo, who recently passed away. I mean, that was one of the things that he instituted here, that, that Maui did favor development of high-end hotel resources.
Well, here's the thing on my thing, my opinion on this is that what makes strong economies is not when the money is concentrated to the elite few, but instead when you have a big middle class.
Yeah.
The bigger the middle class.
The better.
The better your, your economy drifts.
Absolutely.
You can take the bruises of the 2008 crash, you can take the, you know, any kind of depressions or anything dips in your economy.
It's the middle class that gives the society its stability.
They often talk about like the, the flow of money that the middle class has, and the end of the year, the middle class spends 100% of their income, if not 110% of their income.
Right. Well, and which has always been a problem.
Right.
Our savings rate in America is historically low.
But as far as...
And then 2008 happened, and there is no savings.
Right. So exactly right. It just dissipated. So I think that, the fact that people, the middle class would spend that much of their income.
Yeah.
That you have to kind of tell the, the people who are in power and say, "Look, this helps your business." You know, if you own a gas station and you're paying your, your people minimum wage there, guess what? They don't have enough money to buy a car to buy gas in your own gas station.
Right.
So it would help the business owner if he paid his people enough that they could afford a car to put gas in his, in his gas station.
There used to be a phrase, and I got to tell you, I have not heard this phrase in probably 10 years, discretionary income.
Discretionary income.
People used to have discretionary income. It was a thing. Before 2008, it was a thing. They had money that they didn't have a particular demand on. They had discretion on how they were going to spend that money, and that barely exists anymore. You don't even hear the word discretionary income.
Nope. It's, it's a second job, and it's a full 40 job, a full 40-an-hour-a-week job, and a second job, maybe 20 hours a week, and then a third job, maybe once a month, you know? That's really the reality of what a lot of people are doing, and they're not doing it so that they go to the movies. They're doing it so that they can pay a mortgage or pay a rent or put their kids through college.
There's more to our show in just a moment. This program is brought to you as a public service by Maui Causes. Maui Causes is a crowdfunded media production group that provides media production services to a variety of environmental and progressive causes here in Maui County. Visit us on the web at www MauiCauses.org.
So it doesn't help when our county wastes money. You know, we have this, this, you know, to me, it's just a corrupt system. We have this corrupt system where people are making bad decisions, lawyers are defending bad decisions because why? Well, that's job security for corporate counsel. And so we have this structural problem here in this county. What kind of changes do you see that we can, if we're able to have the political will? This is the important point. The county council up until this point has not had the political will to institute the necessary changes. Things got switched around here in the county years ago, and the county campaigns for county council became the entire county, that these people have to campaign and get voted on by everybody. That's very expensive, and I would submit to you that that plan was chosen to be able to keep the riffraff out of the political process because grassroots individuals like yourself, where are you going to get the money?
Yeah.
You know, incumbents, they are, you know, there are representatives from the corporations that are taking Don Couch out to dinner. You know, I mean, Ricky Hochama is hobnobbing with, you know, with Alan Arakawa, plays tennis. You know, so if you're in office, you are, you are easily targeted by corporate interests, and the lobbyists lobby you. And so the individuals such as yourself, it's, you know, it's not easy to, to, to stage a campaign.
It's not easy, but fixing any big system like this has never been easy, you know? But I don't think, now, this is the part where I kind of want to make a point on is, if you think of the times of big change in this country, it wasn't the politicians who made the big change.
Right.
It was the people.
Yes.
You know, when you think about, I'll just give you an example of the Civil Rights Movement. Who do you think? Martin Luther King or Leni B. Johnson? Had a, you know, it was Martin Luther King. He was not a politician, you know? But the politicians had to bend his, put to the will of the people. And I think that is...
But that's only when the people rise up.
Right. You got to have that. And, and so the question is, how do you build a movement, right?
Right.
So I think the Mansato Moratorium was a huge kind of swelling of, of a movement. And now if we keep the ball rolling, then we really can get some significant change. Because if you ask the county council, or if you ask the mayor to, to do some changes to fix it.
They have no interest in...
They, it's, you know, why would they take a lesser... They, it's, you know, why would they take a lesser paycheck? You know, why would they shoot themselves in the foot? It's not the proper way. I think if elected, that's exactly what I would be doing, is to say, hey, if you're going to give me the chance to be in power, then I'm going to try to justify what my decisions are to the people. You know, you have to do that. Anyone who's in control or in power has to justify their power. You know, so if the people don't let, or the people are, whatever, just, you know, you guys are politicians, do your thing, then they're ignorant to what's really going on in the back doors.
Yeah.
Or the back rooms. And that's not democracy at all.
No, no, it's not. It's not. And, you know, we have this, you know, everybody that lives here has a responsibility, you know, you really do. If you, you know, want your children to be able to, you know, live near you, you know, you have to be willing to protect what we have. You know, so many of, in the Kanaka community, you know, I hear that from so many people that they've not wanted to vote. They did not want, they see voting as a validation of a corrupt system. And I understand that. It is, you know, it is perhaps a corrupt system, but it is the current game. You know, it is a game. But it's the, that's the, those are the rules that are being played out now. And we're at such a tipping point in terms of the natural resources especially, and development here in the county, where Maui will never be the same. You know, unless we really kind of reel back on some of the projects that are already supposedly in the bag. There's enough projects that are in the bag that those projects alone will change the visual texture, the traffic flows, and the general quality of life on the island.
Yeah. Now, I'll give you an example of a great scenario where it just, it just shows where the, where we're at in our islands.
Please.
We had the, we had the big wind debacle on Lanai, in which we were going to take one-third of our island and build windmills. And the windmills on the north end of the island, we were underwater cable to Oahu, and then all the energy that we built, or made, would go to Oahu.
Right.
Nothing for Lanai, nothing, we wouldn't get any benefits out of it. And I think that is a good example of these projects that, I mean, you can't think of any worse project. How can you sell this to the public? So, the public fought it. You know, I'm for green energy, that's the dilemma. And I think they're pretty, they're pretty smart when they put that in, you know, like a, you know, do you want me to shoot your hand off? You know, or do you, you know, shoot your leg off? You know, it's, I hate when they give us these two terrible choices, you know? I'm for sustainable energy, I'm for green energy. If there was a place we could put windmills up that it wouldn't, you know, damage our natural resources like the hori bat, we have a very rare bat on the island, and windmills kill bats, it's the reality.
Right.
But if there was a place where we would find, or some areas that we could ensure that our natural resources are not getting destroyed, and of course, we wouldn't, we would, something would benefit the community, instead of just selling it for the most expensive kilowatt per hour you can get.
Right.
Then I would be for these projects. But a lot of times, these projects are.
The arrogance of skipping over the public.
It's like, it just.
And that's the style, you know, if anybody needs validation, if any of you need validation, that the decision-making process of the important things here in Hawaii are not made here in Hawaii. Those decisions are made elsewhere. They're made by multinational corporations that don't live here. They're playing chess with our resources, they're playing chess with our lives. And we have to take the process back. Thank you for running, for, you know, for doing this. It, you know, it's not easy. I know putting yourself into this mix, it's caustic.
Well, so far, my campaign, I haven't had any regrets, no, honestly. I've really had a good time. Because I'm the kind of guy, when I go to the party, I want to talk politics. And a lot of guys are, oh, this guy's too deep, we're just going to hang out over here. Now, all of a sudden on the campaign, everybody wants to talk politics with me.
Oh, great.
So, I'm just like, you know, I'm in where I should be, you know? I think it's, now we can have discussions, you know, where people can, you know, if we're not talking about these issues, then people just stay in the dark, and you don't know. So, when I'm in, when I'm on the trail, when I'm knocking on doors, when I go to the meetings, and I'm hearing the individual stories, that's important to me. Because then I can say, okay, now, it's not just me. Because sometimes you think, oh, it's me against the world, right? You know, everything bad happens to me. But then you hear the stories of other people on this island, and we're all struggling just to try to, you know, be middle class and pay our bills. So, I think that there's strength in numbers, and when you hear other people's going in that scenario, whether it's similar to mine, and, man, we could do something. We really can do something if we all get together and hooly the system, you know?
Well, that's it, it's hooly the system, you know? They're saying you either create, allow, or promote everything that happens to you. You know, and it really does boil down to that. You create, allow, or promote everything that happens to you. And we have allowed so many bad things to happen to these islands, that it really, really is time for change, and we have that opportunity.
I just went to the IUCN conference, you know, the big conference on conservation, and Jane Goodall was there. And she said something similar to that. She quoted, or I'm going to butcher her quote as well, but it was something like.
That's what we're here for, is to butcher quotes.
Your inaction is an action.
Yes.
You know? And it goes along with what you're saying, that if we don't do anything, that's a conscious choice to not do something, and.
No response is a response.
Yep, it'll continue on that way. If that's, if you like being in the trenches of financial inequality, then don't vote.
Right.
I don't want to say that. You should vote. You shouldn't settle for just, you know, being on the fringe and not having a say in your own place. So, people should go out and vote.
You know, you were talking about the middle class. Minimum wage is an issue there. Where do you stand on that?
Well, I'm a firm believer in raising the minimum wage. And I'm glad you asked that. You know, Seattle made a $15 minimum wage. I'm sure we have a higher cost of living than Seattle.
Yeah, Seattle's pretty expensive, too, but yes.
And we can do that. We can make a minimum wage that's a livable wage.
Right.
You know, I see the job postings on Pulama, Lanai, the island, or the company that Larry Ellison's on. And we still offer jobs that are minimum wage jobs. And it's like, that's not, that's not right, because the person before us was, the owner before was Mr. Murdoch, and he was like the cheap billionaire. And now we have the really big billionaire, and we're still getting minimum wage jobs.
Right.
You know, so it's not, it's just a fact of the system, that people here will pay you as little as possible, that's legally as little as possible. You know, I criticize companies on Lanai, and I'll criticize companies on Maui, if they're paying their employees so low that they're eligible for food stamps, or you're eligible for HUD housing.
Right.
That's just saying, we're going to pay you this much, and then the taxpayers recover the rest.
Right.
You know, that's corporate welfare.
Well, and, you know, we live in a system that favors corporations, even more so than on the mainland. I think that's, you know, that's the message that I just keep hammering home here, and that I hope people understand, that, you know, the supported leadership that we have in the county is supported by corporations that are not looking to change anything. They like things the way they are. And any opportunity to create change, they quash that. We have, you know, the county charter, every 10 years, there's a charter revision process, and there's a committee. And, you know, one of the candidates for county council was the chair of that committee. She's a conservative, and she was given, you know, appointed, I guess, as the chair of that committee, and I think for a very good reason. Because that committee had an opportunity to adopt and recommend a proposal for district voting that made sense, that brought the cost down for candidates to be able to run for office. And she killed it.
Yeah.
There was no way that that conservative individual, supported by corporate interests, there was no way that Yuki Lee was going to allow that proposal to enter into the charter revision process. And now, she's running for county council. So, we have these, it's very clear, the corporate forces that are at play. It's very clear, the individuals. You can see, if you look at the players, you can see who is aligned with the corporations, and who is aligned with supporting the people and giving the people a vote. There's a clear difference between these candidates.
Oh, yeah. You know, I think what you're saying there is, you know, as far as district voting, I'm a big fan of it. I think it's really, again, it's not very democratic, when I have, when all the power is concentrated in Waialuku Kahului area.
Yeah.
You know, the outer islands, I come, I take the ferry over, I take the public buses, no shame, I take the bus, I go to Queen Kalamana Center, and then I go to where the events are. And that's how I campaign. That's Gabe Johnson on the trail, riding the bus.
Riding the bus, and have a conversation with you on the bus.
Yeah. You know, but that's the thing, is, why would I not take the bus? It's only $2, you know?
Well, there is a big cultural thing. I mean, our bus, the usage of our bus here in Maui County, I think we have a higher usage of tourists that are actually using our bus system than residents. Because there's some cultural notion that, you know, if you're, you know, that it doesn't look good if you are in a financial position that you need to ride the bus.
Well, let me put it like this. If I advocate for more buses, or expanding our bus system, and I don't take the bus that I'm pushing for.
Right.
That's hypocrisy at its best, you know?
Sure.
So, I'll ride the bus, you know, because I want more services. There's plenty of people who are on the edges of society that can't afford a car, and the bus is their lifeline.
Right.
You know, people say, oh, get a job, get a job. These people, it's hard for them to get a job when they don't have transportation, so the bus will help them, you know?
They should serve beer on the bus. That would up the ridership. Because, you know, if you have an event here on Maui, and there's no beer, nobody shows up.
Nobody shows up.
Nobody shows up. You got to have beer. What other kinds of things have you discovered through this process of being a candidate? What's, because that's a unique position.
Yeah.
Not many people actually go through that process, so, you know.
Well, you know, real talk here, I'll be honest. The first week or so, I sat there and like, oh my God, what am I getting myself into?
What have I done?
But after that, your heart hardens, and you get that passion, and you think, I can do this, you know, and I can do it for my daughter, I can do it for your children. You know, there's a, there's a kind of a humanity to it, that, you know, I'm just a guy, and so is my opponent Ricky Hochama. There's nothing that's that much different than us. We're just two guys, we're going to fight out, and we're going to try to represent the island of Lanai, or the people of Maui County. Now, who can do the better job, or who actually represents the people? Then we can have the debate. But as far as the fear of putting myself out there and running, throw it in, throw my, I'm going, let's do this, you know, I'm in it to win it, you know?
That's great.
Yeah.
Well, that's what it takes, is, you know, that energy, that openness to the process.
Yeah.
And it is that kind of a job. You know, it's an all-or-nothing kind of job. You know, you, as, I've been consistently surprised how few of the incumbent county council members have research assistants. Ellie Cochran and Don Guzman are the only two county council members that I know of that actually have people on their staff doing independent research. And that, to me, is extraordinarily telling.
Yeah.
Because if you're not asking your own questions, if you're not doing your own homework, then where are you getting your information from?
It's authoritative. You think you've got the best ideas.
You're being, well, it's beyond that, it's not even.
Oh, you're saying like they're answering to the corporations and stuff?
Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, they're being told what their opinions are. They don't have to do the work to formulate an opinion. Their opinions are force-fed to them.
Yeah.
And that's, to me, insulting, you know, that, you know, and we see it, it's just part of this pervasive attitude. Injection wells, I know, is something that we've talked about in the past. Where are things with that?
Well, I know that there was some discussion, we just, you know, we had at the Filipino forum last night, where Ricky Hochama was saying it would cost up to $1 billion to move them.
Right.
You know, and I think that is, that's not a fair point, you know? We need, that's, that discussion, we shouldn't be talking about that. The discussion should be, why are you not enforcing the public trust? And what's, how can you defend it? You know, why are you putting all of this pollution into the reefs? And your very duty is to protect those reefs. And then, of course, it says, oh, well, you know, we don't have the money for that. So, when you have that discussion, then everybody says, oh, yeah, we don't, I don't want to spend $1 billion.
Well, we don't have that kind of money.
Yeah.
But yet.
You're going to tax me? And people get nervous about that.
Right.
But that's like fear-mongering in a sense. You know, I think the reality is, is you have to take care of your natural resources. And if you're put in that position where that is your responsibility, and you're just letting the sewage seep into the Kanapali reefs and the west, or I mean, Kihei side, as well as Waialuku side, you're in dereliction of duty, you know? So, and then, of course, there is the discussion, well, what do we do then? You know, well, how are we going to fix this? I mean, there's a lot of ways you can fix this. It's only going to get worse, first off, because they're building two more resorts right next to the West Maui Treatment Plant. I don't know if you've seen them, there are going to be massive resorts there. So, add two more resorts to that sewer plant. And if you, if we really take a step back and look at, there are greener ways to do this. You can kind of treat sewer water like you do in a fish tank, where you make the sunlight shine through the water, put some duckweed at the top.
Breaks it down.
And the nitric cycle goes, it's getting kind of scientific, but the point is, is there's greener ways, there's less expensive ways, and ways that won't let the pollution just seep up through the groundwater on the ocean side.
Right.
So, for people to say, oh, it's just going to cost too much, let us just keep pumping sewer water into the reef, that's the wrong discussion we have. We need to start having a discussion of, what are we doing to protect the public trust? We entrusted our elected officials to take care of the aina, to take care of the, you know, the land and the air and the water we live on.
So, the existing wells can be modified, the sewage systems there can be modified without having to, quote-unquote, move.
Yeah.
The technology was minimal. And it was exploitative technology when it was installed. There were people that tried to stop that process 20 years ago, and, you know, were denied their professional opinions. I mean, there was testimony given. And they just, you know, completely ignored the testimony, and blocked testimony from being given.
And so now, they have the EPA's coming down on the county, you know? And there's, they're getting fines.
It's the same kind of thing with the seawall at Olualu.
The seawall's a good example.
12, 20 years ago, the county started to spend money ill-advised to, you know, manipulate properties there with a haphazard plan that didn't get managed properly, and wasted millions and millions of county dollars, and nothing got done. Well, those are the people that are still in charge. They made bad decisions then, they're making bad decisions now, and they need to go. We need fresh blood. We need people that have a heart, and are willing to step up to the plate to represent your needs, not the corporation's needs. You know, some of this stuff is scientific, you know? You don't have to apologize for getting a little scientific, it's a good thing. And that's why people are, you know, vote for candidates, is because it's your full-time job, you know, to understand this stuff, and be willing to dive in and make your own decisions. But there's, you know, unless a person is corrupt, there's no other way to do it. You have to do your homework.
Yeah. I mean, the people that I'm going to answer to are going to be people, all right? The people that, or some others are answering to, you know, corporate interests, but at least I'm out there trying to talk to the people. And that way, that's where a lot of the information came from. And that way, that's where a lot of the information came from. You know, I can Google alternative ways of, you know, wastewater treatment, but also, I'd like to go out in there and talk to people. And then I can hear, you know, I never thought that, you know, some of these issues that some people have, until you start putting yourselves in their shoes, then you can truly represent them. That's what I think.
I think so too. I think it, you know, it requires, you know, that focus and understanding, you know, of Kuliana and Manao, and having, you know, these, they're not, they're not uniquely Hawaiian, but they're, they are at the core of Hawaiian culture, is that responsibility.
We live in Hawaii, it's the host culture, yeah. It's gonna, you throw a man in the ocean, you're going to get salt out of him. You know, you live here long enough, you're going to take some, you're going to learn some of the Hawaiian values.
Right. It's inspiring, yeah. It's the best, you know, that a society can bring. And we can only hope that it blossoms and continues to thrive here. Because it is so sorely needed to bring that heart energy into our process. The power, economic and political, here in these counties, has been so tremendously consolidated into the hands of a power elite. And they are dominating the process, and it's time to bring it back home. Thank you so much for everything that you're doing, Gabe Johnson. Thank you for running for county council, and for all the good work that you will do when you are elected. Thank you all for joining us again on this week's installment. Look for us again, Maui Causes. Find us online. See us again. Aloha.
Aloha.
We're down at the Kahului Community Center, where there's lots of kids and family out in support of Keane Rollins. She's running for county council from Molokai. But because the way that the county council voting system is set up, everybody gets to vote for her, so you can vote for her too. Know who she is, and why she's running for county council, and how she fits into this very unique situation that we have in this election cycle, where so many of the county council candidates are aligned with one another. They have a common understanding, and an opportunity that if enough of them, if you vote enough of them into office, you can create some real change here in Maui County.
I don't really like mics and cameras. I'm not one for talking, I'm more about action. Just give me the work, and I'll do it. I was born and raised on Molokai. I went to Molokai High, graduated a farmer, proud farmer. I recently graduated from UH Manoa Law School. With a law degree and certificate in native Hawaiian law and environmental law. And at the same time, I worked on my master's in business administration, and completed that this year. And I did all of that because I love my community. They're the ones who supported me, and they're the ones who brought me to this place that I am in life. When I look out at all of you, and I see all the blue and teal shirts, it reminds me of, of water. And water is one of the most powerful elements in the world. And we are over 75% water. You are one of the most powerful elements in the world. This past week, we're reminded of just how powerful water is. When it came rushing down the side of the cliff, that was what I had vision for, for us as a community. We come rushing together, and we do great things. And that's what we saw this past weekend, when the community came out, they received the Kahia in Iau, in Waikapu. There was a lot of destruction. There were boulders the sizes of buses, because that's what water does, it moves mountains. And that's what we can do. We can move mountains. And the community came together. It was aloha aku, aloha mai. And we've been seeing this, this pattern of people rising up, of the community coming together to make their voices heard. And that's what I hope to be for you on the county council. I want to make your voices heard, your powerful voices that can move mountains.
Thank you again for watching this edition of Maui Causes. I'm Sam Small. You know, we bring you this program because no one else is. You will not find these opinions and these ideas in the Maui News. They don't write about this stuff, because they don't want you taking action. We want you taking action, because that's what's going to create change here in Maui County, and we so desperately need that change here. Things for far too long have been under the control of off-island corporate interests that are only interested in profits. They're not interested in your well-being, they're not interested in your kids or your grandkids. They don't care whether your kids can afford to live on this island, they don't care if they have to leave to be able to follow their dreams and make a living, and that's wrong. We should have a community that is sustainable, and you can make that happen. Thanks for viewing. Please, go out and vote.
This program is brought to you as a public service by Maui Causes. Maui Causes is a crowdfunded media production group that provides media production services to a variety of environmental and progressive causes here in Maui County. Visit us on the web at www MauiCauses.org.